Yeah, I'm happy to. I know Megan did it. Yeah, I'm absolutely happy to do that too if anybody wants to. No, but I can do it. Yeah. Okay. Cool. Yeah, we can definitely figure it out. Okay, cool. Thank you. Did you put your name? And I'm just like, I don't want to look. Have done something?
No. And I have a job. At the end of the day, my job isn't necessarily getting raw, dark with people in this thing. It's like. Girl right now. I'm like, is Quinn?
Yeah, I like that.
All right. Now that all the council members are present, I call the October fifteenth meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. Council did not meet in closed session this evening, and we would like to invite our guests to join council and staff in the pledge which will be led by Mr. Greg Garcia. If you can stand up from your place and lead us in the pledge for your city. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. As is noted on our agenda, city councils prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any actions and items that are brought up under item one for public comment, but it provides an opportunity, an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council and issues not listed on the agenda. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening, to please fill out a request to speak card and turn it into the clerk. We accept the request to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. And once the staff report has been read and we open up the item for public comment, the clerk will announce your name for you to walk to the podium to speak. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and we ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Further more, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chamber, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct, post it, and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Now, this brings us to item one, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council, and each person has thirty minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak under public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Ron Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, nice to see you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am Ron Anderson. I'm apparently, according to the records, still a member of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, well, let me give you a little background. I've served for eight years on a city council a million years ago in Palo Alto. I've served on the school board for, in Medford, Oregon, and a lot of other little commissions. But I have never been seeing anything quite so disappointing as what I've seen come from this community through this council. And that is when a commission concludes, there should be a new council selected, or a new planning commission selected. You came down with a minority. Now, that was something you would settle in the next twenty-four hours. One person gets together with another person, with a staff member, and they talk it over, and they come to a conclusion, and they compromise. It's been, what, nine months now since you have come to a minority decision? And volunteers who stepped forward to be on the commission and other commission, I don't know about the others, but the planning commission, have been sitting waiting. Now, that's ridiculous. I would highly recommend that you work this week to settle this. Get together, give off, give up some of your high horse on them that the mayor had, and give some of the others them. Work it out. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little excited here. Anyway, my point simply needs to be, it's a two-year term. It's been eight months, or no, ten months, since we should have been relieved. We're still on the commission. I resigned. I'm too old to do this anymore, but there's other people who should, and they need the position, they need the opportunity. And you can do it. So I've stepped aside, and hopefully you'll take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Matt Weaver.
Good evening, council, mayor, everybody. Congratulations. Our city government is open, more than we can say for the federal government. Pretty cool. Good job, everybody. And we're not making new districts in our city. That's pretty cool, too. So the outside world's chaos, and sometimes your little piece is home. West Sacramento, right? I think that's what most people here want, right? Is there a little piece of peace? And one thing that I've come to really admire about the city is I know that they listen. But one thing I can see that's really clear is things take too long, things are too complicated, things are too confusing, and there's a lot of hand-wringing bottleneck and just being okay with going slow. Now, I've come to talk about maps in the past, and I'll bring up maps again tonight, because that's one of the things about how do you navigate doing business with the city? Who puts out rule on top of rule on top of rule that contradicts rule on top of rule on top of rule? Even all you really smart people, accomplished people, educated people, doctors, people who've achieved great things, you have to look left and right and ask five people for help on how to navigate your city as a leader. So imagine, you know, being one of the people who doesn't have all those people to help them navigate, and you roll out a program, and you throw in a map, and it's inconsistent with what you listened to and what you learned, and where do you go, right? And I've talked about the retail cannabis maps, which was just complete contradiction to direction this council set forward. I talked about maps for Measure N and the Business Accelerator, and how those are different than the other maps for the retail cannabis. And tonight, there's a new map with this like tourism district. I don't quite understand it, but I'm here to be educated and learn. But there's no one helping the average Joe or Jane navigate their way through the city, whether it's a small business owner or someone trying to do a carport. And I've got some ideas, but we have to see a council and a city staff that wants to move ideas through the process on a reasonable timeline. Not just entertain, not just wait for appeals, not just to wait for conflict resolution, but lead. Responsible leadership is inclusive, it's listening to different voices, and then it's taking action. And I just encourage the city to take a refreshed approach and make us an example of what it would be like to have a great city to do business with. We're not that example today. A city of our size doesn't need to stumble as frequently as we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
Thank you, madam clerk. Now, we'll begin under item two with presentation of the proclamation recognizing Filipino History Month. And we have council member Karina Orozco, who will be doing the honors of that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In our beautiful short meeting this evening, I am thrilled to have a highlight of a proclamation that we as a city council get to honor each year now. Filipino-American History Month is the month of October, and each October, we honor the heritage and contributions of Filipino-Americans, marking the first documented leading in Maro Bay in fifteen eighty-seven and the founding of the Filipino-American National Historical Society in nineteen eighty-two, which was later recognized by Congress in two thousand nine. I am very proud of this proclamation as a proud Filipina. Mexipina is what my family calls me. But my grandfather, Kirino Vianueva, came from the Philippines back in the early to nineteen hundreds in order to work the sugarcane in Hawaii. And he came to Sacramento, met my grandmother, and the rest is history. But what I learned from my heritage is there's so many of us that are overlooked, right? We are, our history and culture is not celebrated. There are many that aren't getting celebrated in our city council. So I am very, very proud to be able to honor the folks that came before us and the folks that will come after us to represent the history and culture of the Filipino-American community. Tonight, I wanted to ask Greg Garcia, Talino Garcia, as well as Noah Shin and Nikki Stewart to come up to the podium, please. Now, in a moment, as they're making their way up, I wanted to say that some of these members, specifically Noah Shin and Nikki Stewart, are part of our Philippine Law Student Association at UC Davis, also known as the King Hall Filipino Lawyers Association. Yay! A group of phenomenal young leaders who are leading the charge to work in our justice system to make an impact. And I had an opportunity to speak before the group several months ago and got a chance to meet some of these young impressive leaders and seeing what they can do and what they will do. And I really got to say, thank you so much for being here. There'll be an opportunity to speak in just a moment. But I really hope that you get familiar with this dais, because in a moment, you are going to be asked to step forward and lead in your own municipalities in some way, shape, or form, whether that be being a city attorney or taking this, you know, leadership position. But thank you for being here. I also wanted to honor my friend and brother Greg Garcia, who is a proud second-generation Filipino-American who has dedicated much of his life to uplifting the Filipino community in West Sacramento and beyond. Born in San Francisco and raised in Vallejo, Greg moved to Sacramento after attending UC Davis, Aggies, where he began mentoring Filipino youth as part of the very first Filipino-American Youth Leadership Conference in nineteen ninety-six, hosted by the Philippine National Day Association. We call it PNDAs. Over the years, he has helped build and lead organizations that nurture young Filipino leaders, artists, and changemakers, including his current role as Board President of the Philippine National Day Association. It all comes full circle. Greg's passion for empowering youth through culture, art, and community has been a through line in his work as a nonprofit leader, educator, and now is a part of the City of Sacramento's Community Engagement Team. And he's looking at me crazy because he didn't expect me to say any of that. He was like, do I gotta say anything? Anyway, I hear, hold this proclamation. In a moment, we'll get a chance to stand and take a photo. And I just want to finish with the end. It just now here, I'll finish with now, in two thousand twenty-five, the theme Filipino-American History Month, "From Quotas to Communities: Filipino-American Migration and Movement," highlights some milestones in Filipino migration history and provides opportunity for all West Sacramento residents to celebrate the contributions and cultural legacy of Filipino-Americans. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of West Sacramento does hereby proclaim October two thousand twenty-five as Filipino-American History Month in the City of West Sacramento, and encourages our community to join in the celebration of Filipino heritage, traditions, and accomplishments, proclaim this fifteenth day of October two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I'll turn it to you if you'd like to ask if anybody would have. Thank you, council member. Would anybody like to share any additional thought? Filipino History Month? Yes. Council member, please share your thoughts.
Thank you, guys, for being here. I am also a proud Aggie, and so I love seeing my fellow Aggies here representing our entire community and representing your community as well. These proclamations, I feel, are always really important because it ensures that our community knows, our entire community, that they are seen, that they are welcomed, and that we are all in this together. And so, thank you so much for being here.
Yes. Thank you. Well, I'm really proud that the City of West Sacramento does this every year. And it's so important to recognize contributions and the accomplishments, you know, of your community. So I want to thank you for being here to receive this resolution. They are pro temp?
Thank you.
It's on.
It's on. It's wonderful to see you all here tonight, and just, you know, to echo my colleague's statements, it's wonderful to have representation. And, you know, we say it a lot, if you can see it, you can be it. And to step into these roles and mentor others from your community is so powerful, you know. As you have a proud Filipina on our council, to be able to see these people in positions of power, I think, is so powerful, especially for young women. So thank you for the work you do, and also go Ags.
Well, I also want to echo my colleagues' support for your representation here in city council and receiving the proclamation, because we are very honored to have your presence and grateful for your contributions for our community, you know, to our community, elevating not only the older adult Filipino community, which is passing on the traditions and the history, but to our young youth who are, you know, continuing to develop, many competing demands for their attention. And it's proclamations like this that kind of bring it back together and what you've accomplished in between the sandwich generation, knowing that you have both sides to continue to bridge, you know, the gaps and making sure that you preserve your culture, your heritage. And grateful for my council member here, who is continuing to champion the Filipino-Americans in our community. So thank you, council member, and thank you for your presence. Council member, sending it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody like to make any remarks, even brief? Please, Garcia.
Thank you. On behalf of the Filipino community in West Sac and the region, thank you for this honor. It's great to have, like you said, representation and acknowledgement that Filipino-American history is American history. And as a proud West Sac resident myself, it's good to do things in my own city for a change and working for the City of Sac all day long.
How about King Hall, anyone? Noah?
My name's Noah. I am part of Filsa, the Philippine Law Student Association, at King Hall, second-year law student. And I just want to say I'm so honored to be able to appear here on behalf of Filsa in light of this proclamation. And I just want to quickly, because the board really wanted to come, they just had prior obligations. I think they have evening class as well as oral advocacy competition training, so they could not be here tonight. I just want to say their names very quickly. Our two co-chairs, Nate Ting and Angelina Obadoza. Our treasurer and our secretary, Isabella Hopkins and Megan Madaba. Our internal communications chair, Grace Lapuz, and our social media chair, Mika Dow. And of course, I am the external communications chair. My name's Noah Shin. Again, just want to thank you all. This is a really, really cool thing.
Yes. Fantastic. Please come on up in front of the podium. We'll grab a photo.
Paul, you're up next.
Perfect.
It is Agenda Item Three, which is consideration of the proclamation recognizing October eighteenth to October twenty-fifth as California Flood Preparedness Week. And you have a team here. Great. Thank you. Great to have the team come up. And so, what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation and then ask my colleagues to share a few words about how important this is. And then we'll ask you to share a few thoughts as well. October eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as California flood preparedness week, whereas the City of West Sacramento is protected by fifty miles of levee, and city leaders recognize the significant public safety threat that flooding poses to its residents, assets, and economy of the city. And whereas the City of West Sacramento and the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency consider flood protection a top priority and have worked diligently to improve the levee system that protects the city. And whereas the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency completed design of the Yola Bypass East Levee South and North Projects in two thousand twenty-one in advance of federal funding. And whereas the City of West Sacramento Project received new start designation in two thousand twenty-two. And the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers received federal appropriations of twenty-five point four million in two thousand twenty-two, seventy-two point three million in two thousand twenty-three, and fifty-two point eight million in two thousand twenty-four to design and construct further levee improvements. And whereas the Army Corps of Engineers awarded the contract and completed construction of the Yola Bypass East Levee South in two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the Army Corps of Engineers awarded a contract and completed the construction of the Yola Bypass East Levee North Project in two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the Army Corps of Engineers is presently in design for portions of the Sacramento River North Levee Stone Lock and Yola Bypass East Levee South Projects. And whereas without substantial improvements in West Sacramento levees, area properties could suffer billions of dollars in structural and land damage if the city were to experience a large-scale flooding event. And whereas during the California Flood Preparedness Week, local, state, and federal agencies across the state work together to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, how to prepare their homes and families for a flood, and plan for recovery. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of West Sacramento declares October eighteenth to twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, in California, Blood Preparedness Week, and resolve to support increased public awareness about the threat of flooding and encourage all residents to take action to be prepared, proclaim this fifteenth day of October twenty twenty-five. So I'd like to ask my colleagues if they'd like to share a few words. Who would like to begin? They are pro temp?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Paul, Jen, thank you for being here tonight. It's interesting. So as a member of the OSAFCA board, we meet monthly, and we have regular conversations about what cities do to protect our city from floods. And so, while we have this week, Flood Preparedness Week, I feel like we're flood preparedness.
I feel like we're flood preparedness annually because it's been a number one priority of the city for the last 20 years. I had somebody reach out to me recently and ask, uh, kind of what our flood program was. And I was very proud to share the work that we're doing and the billions of dollars which has been invested. And I also mentioned our full-time staff that work on this. And we would not be where we're at today without your work. And I know we're working to add people to the team as well. So thank you for holding down the fort. Thank you for everything you do to protect our community. Um, and it's just, it's a pleasure to serve, um, on the West Safica Board. Uh, we're both, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll say something really quick.
Go ahead.
I also serve on the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Board. And I am very, uh, happy to say that before I got on the board, I had no idea how much work was done by so many people to keep us safe here in Sacramento. So thank you. Thank you for also advocating all the time, Paul, when we go to Washington and bringing so much knowledge. Jen, thank you also. Uh, you give us a lot of information on what our budgets are like.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. Thank you so much. Paul, it's wonderful to see you always, uh, representing, uh, flood for our city. Um, I gotta say that you're one of the hardest working, you and Greg over the years together have been two of the hardest working people when it comes to flood control. And I, I know that year after year, we get these, uh, um, our priorities. I don't know if people know, uh, that we as council members get together in February for a few days to talk about what our city's priorities are. And while we would love to amenitize and provide everybody with everything they would desire, the first and foremost, public safety is our job. That's our job. And that public safety isn't often representative of what people think to be as flood control. They think of police and fire, but equally is important, you know, flooding remains one of the most costly and common natural disasters that can impact, um, a community. And it, it just goes beyond damaged property. We live in a bowl surrounded by levees and the importance of maintaining those levees and ensuring that they're secure is basically our entire world in West Sacramento. And thank you for dedicating your life to it. A side note, I don't know if Paul, anybody knows this, but Paul does, um, extended plank, planking, um, for exercise. I caught him in the gym one time and I said, "How many minutes have you done so far?" And he was like, "Three." And I was like, "Okay, all right, you got this." And so, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna challenge you. Um, I'm up to a lot and it's all you and I. But it's a representation of how we're building, um, these bridges and making sure that we are strong so that we can ensure that no one in our family is disrupted. It has absolutely, bridges has nothing to do with that, okay? My, my planking, but, um...
Strong bridges, strong bodies.
You know, I'm working on it, but it didn't come out the way I had hoped. It's, I can come up with magic, just not tonight. Um, but, you know, the safety and stability of our neighborhoods is everything. And thank you for protecting our families and for making, I appreciate you both.
I can do like a 30-second plank, so I'm super impressed. I'm working on it though. Um, I, what I appreciate about us doing these proclamations, to my colleague's, um, point, every month, every day, you all are working tirelessly, uh, to ensure that our city remains safe, um, that we, to, um, council member, um, Orozco's point, we live in a bowl, and that our levees remain strong. Um, however, what I, I love about these opportunities is for our residents who oftentimes may not realize that you are working every day and that we are maintaining these levees and we are continuing to ensure that they, um, that they are able to protect us, that they are able to, to spotlight and see you all, the work that you do, um, and the work as a community, uh, that we are doing, uh, with you. And so that's why I appreciate these proclamations. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, um, and for keeping us safe. And give me a year, uh, 'cause I'm, I'm on a wellness journey right now and I'll be right there with you.
Well, I don't know if you've ever seen Paul dance, but I have.
Planking and dancing? What?
He can cut the rug. That's right. Just want to say thank you very much. I am so proud of what we've accomplished, um, you know, in, in preparation for, you know, um, a flood. So the flood protection program that, um, I, I wanted to make sure when I went to Japan at the United Nations, um, university there, was to speak about our flood protection plan. It is, you know, an engineered, you know, process that was utilizing our local resources and building back a habitat for the water life. And we all did a tour of that with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer in Congress Room endorsement, Mitsuwi. We got a chance to see kind of like the end product. And, and I would encourage everybody to continue to see when, as, you know, we have the winter here and the waters are rising, to see, you know, the, the water coming in and, and the fish having their place to be able to come in and our city protected because it's, it's like a double levee. And, um, and in between all of that is that preserved, you know, fish life, that preserved life that, um, you know, we just made sure that we did everything we can. Now, given that it's a setback, um, of 3.88 miles, a setback, um, there were some consequences among those on the road who lived along the road. Um, and, and I remember, um, Councilmember Bill Kristof, you know, took, took the lead on working, you know, with those homeowners, um, so that we can have a safer city. Um, Hurricane, when Hurricane Katrina hit and about 1,300 people died, um, and seeing the impact of Hurricane Katrina just all throughout the city and the flood, that could happen here in West Sacramento. We could be 20 feet deep in water quickly. And all of our, um, our emergency evacuation routes, you know, are going to be, um, difficult to navigate our way through with water coming in quickly. So appreciate all of this. I encourage everybody to continue to do tours of, you know, what's going on with these updated levees because it's been a while since I've done it and I'm, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity, Paul. Thank you for all your hard work, um, and, and picking up the mantle as, uh, you know, we transitioned, so that you can continue, um, making sure that we continue making, um, these 55 miles as we are surrounded with water. And, um, and our continued growth in the city. We started off at about 22,000 when we became a city and now we're at 55,000 and continuing to grow. It's, it's, people cannot believe that that many people are now, you know, here in West Sacramento. Um, and that's, that's that relationship and also Reclamation District 900, which we're all a member of. I remember them working out very hard when we had one of those, um, downpours and the city got flooded and they were out there making sure the pumps were draining the water out from the city streets. And has nothing to do with things not operating or broken. It's just how heavy of a downpour our city can experience. And also, you know, seeing, um, the Sacramento Yacht Club when, um, their, their docks there got, um, uh, destroyed and being able to, you know, have a ribbon cutting, uh, after the reconstruction. So making sure that what they learned from that experience is that they renewed their insurance policy and right before that, um, event happened. So I think everybody needs to really assess your insurance policies. I know the rates are increasing. Um, flood insurance is a, is an opportunity for us. Encourage everybody to maintain flood insurance as a separate policy. I always get the reminders every year and renew every year. It's not always impounded in your, um, insurance policy that you get when you pay your mortgage. It's a separate policy you have to pay. So encourage everybody to do that and, you know, happy to work with you to push out any announcements on flood protection week and, and being prepared, you know, in va, in case of an event. Winter is upon us and we all need to be prepared. Paul, Jenny, if you can share your thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, Jen has prepared some statements for you in response to proclamation.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jen Nguyen and I'm an admin analyst with the city's flood protection division and also a staff member of the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, which I have a pleasure of working with Verna and Norma, or Councilmember Lopez Yohol and Councilmember Alcala. Um, flood protection has been and continues to be one of the city's top strategic priorities for the past, um, 20 years. And we are here tonight to recognize flood preparedness week, which is next week from October 18th through 25th. Last year, our region experienced above-average rainfall, including a record-breaking atmospheric river. And looking ahead forecast due predict that we're transitioning to a flood Nina year, which, uh, means we could have unpredictable extreme weather such as, uh, long dry periods and intense atmospheric river events. And so this is a good reminder of why flood preparedness is so important. Together with our partners, the Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Water Resources, we are working toward achieving 200-year level flood protection for our community. And right now, we are in design for three of our projects, the Yellow Bypass East Levee Project, the Sacramento River North Levee and Stone Lock. And construction for the Yellow Bypass East Levee Project is anticipated to complete next year in 2026. On behalf of Flood Protection Division, I want to thank the council for recognizing flood preparedness week and for your continued support and leadership.
Well done.
Thank you. Ready for a photo now?
All right.
We have our consent agenda items four through seven. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or presentation? Nope. Great. We'll, um, ask for public comment. Madam Clerk, can you request to speak?
We have no request to speak on the items on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll accept a motion.
Still moved.
Second. All right. All right, Councilmember Alcala moved and Councilmember Orozco seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, thank you. This is now approved. Next is our Economic Development and Housing Department, which is consideration of, oh, sorry, Agenda Item Eight under our regular agenda. We have, um, no public hearing agenda items at this time. So our Economic Development and Housing Department, which is consideration of adoption of Resolution 25-107, declaring the City of West Sacramento's intention to establish the West Sacramento Tourism Marketing District and related actions. And I believe Ms. Megan Stiles is going to be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just, they're gonna pull up my presentation. Let all begin. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, uh, for item number eight, or Megan Stiles, um, Economic Development Manager. Um, we are asking for consideration of adoption of Resolution 25-107, declaring the City of West Sacramento's intention to establish the West Sacramento Tourism Marketing District and related actions. Staff respectfully recommends that the council adopt Resolution 25-107, which declares the city's intention to establish the West Sacramento Tourism Marketing District, also known as WSTMD, sets the time and place for a public meeting to hear testimony on establishing the WSTMD and levying assessments, uh, which would be held on November 5th at 7:00 PM. And also sets the time and place for a public hearing to establish the WSTMD and the levy of assessments on certain lodging businesses for December 3rd, 2025. Um, so I do have a short presentation prepared. Um, I came to council last year in December, um, of 2024. That was the last time that I came. So I'll just do, um, a brief overview, um, and then, uh, we can move on to the action item. Um, so for today's agenda, um, I'm going to do a little bit of a district overview. So just kind of what the purpose is, how we got to where we are, the financial impact, uh, so revenue generation and, uh, kind of what the benefits and attention are behind this, the formation process, and then what our next steps are. So how we got here, um, the Tourism Improvement District is something that has been on the strategic plan since 2023. So in 2023, it was on the policy. We did exploration. Uh, we developed an RFP to work with a consultant, which we ultimately awarded to Civitas in March of 2024. And then in, um, again, like I mentioned, at the end of 2024, I came with a feasibility study stating that, uh, there was an appetite from the hotels to move forward with formation. Um, and it moved to the management, um, plan in 2024 to kind of perfo, pursue that, uh, formation and implementation. Um, and we did work with lodging owners, um, over the last, um, really the last year, um, representing over 50% of the total assess, assessments to be, um, uh, to be had and submitted favorable petitions. And that's kind of how we came, uh, to this point in the process. So what is a Tourism Marketing District? And just to kind of make a note, um, when I originally came to the council, this was the West Sacramento TID, which is a Tourism Improvement District. The, uh, hoteliers made the decision in their management district plan that they wanted to refer to it as a Tourism Marketing District. It is the same thing. It's just, um, a difference of words. So I am referring to the same thing that I came to council with last year. Um, so a Tourism Marketing District really allows for private sector efficiency. So a specific, uh, market-based promotion in this instance, it's, uh, entertainment and hotels. Um, and it's governed by those who pay the assessment. So it's governed by, um, the hoteliers that pass along that, um, that assessment. It's dedicated funding. So it is a specific pot of money that is, um, used for promotion and marketing of entertainment and overnight stays within the city. Um, for us, the boundary is the entire city and I'll go into a little bit more detail of that, um, in some later slides. But it is a productive revenue stream. It cannot be used for anything else other than what is written into the management district plan that is then governed by the hoteliers. Um, so it's not a decision that the city can come in and divert funds at any point in time. It is specifically for that, that use. Um, it allows for the hotels to do customized marketing specifically for West Sacramento, um, and really find a way to find a unique voice for our entertainment industry that we have now and in the future. And it is a model that has been used all over California, outside of California. Um, and regionally, I do have a list of some other jurisdictions, um, adjacent to us that have Tourism Marketing Districts, and they've proven to be very successful. So for us, um, our district scope, uh, we are looking at an annual revenue. Uh, that revenue is based on the most recent reported TOT taxes and then using a 2% model, um, on that, is about 400-plus, that's conservative, but 400-plus, um, thousand dollars annual revenue for promotion efforts. That is based on a 2% initial assessment rate. So in the management district plan, which is, uh, the plan that the hotels have come to agreement that, um, they agree with the, every, the model that's in there, um, they can flex up to 4% uh, with a vote by, uh, by the board. They cannot go below 2%. Um, so it's 2% at minimum. Um, this assessment is for hotels that have 50 or more rooms, um, and for stays that are less than 30 consecutive days. And the initial term of a Tourism Marketing District is five years, at which point we would come back to the council for a renewal. That renewal can, I believe, be up to 10 years, but the initial is five years. So for the proposed assessed hotels in the TMD, they include, uh, seven hotels. Um, Hampton Inn and Suites, Spring Hill Suites by Marriott, Home to Suites by Hilton, Holiday Inn Express, Extended Stay America, Motel 6, and Granada Inn. Granada Inn has more than 50 rooms. They, however, do not report or pay TOT taxes, so they are a non-voting member. Um, and I would be remiss not to mention, um, Hampton and, uh, Spring Hill Suites, who have really led the charge on this. Um, I know that Gagon and Amric Singh are, they're, have a whole family trip in Cabo, so they're not here. But I know there's representatives from the hotels, so thank you for being here. Um, they've been a great supporter from the beginning, even at the beginning of the feasibility study. And they've helped me in facilitating conversations with other hotels and really helped to show like what the benefit is of this. They have experience in other jurisdictions, so they've been a really great partner. Um, so for the proposed budget, um, this is, uh, just kind of a rough breakdown of what the hoteliers have agreed that this would, um, their budget could go towards. So they have a contingency at 5%. Administration is set at 10%. Part of that 10% is also up to a Part of that 10% is also up to a 2% assessment that the city will collect to help cover the costs of actually collecting the assessment through our TOT, our tax consultant, and then also for the staff, staff time used to facilitate that, and then any auditing that's done. And then 85% of it will be towards sales, marketing, and destination development. This is a list of some of the other jurisdictions adjacent to us that have Tourism Marketing Districts or similar. When we were looking at the percentage that we were proposing to the hotels to impose, we wanted to keep the total guest charge in mind so that we were not going over that and making ourselves less competitive as having just more taxing overall for the overnight stays. So we've stayed within that. The key benefits for West Sacramento, like I've mentioned, destination marketing. We did do some of the destination marketing with the Play the West campaign, which was super fun. This is a chance to really expand on that and give the actual hotels and entertainment industry a true voice instead of it just coming from the city. They can really take ownership of it. Revenue growth, we're hoping that increased overnight stays then drives additional TOT taxes, which hopefully those folks are then spending their tax dollars here, eating at our restaurants, et cetera. Business collaboration, so a chance for the hotel owners to get together and have discussions like this has proven to already be, you know, something that is a benefit to them. And I'm hoping that the managers and folks, not even just at the ownership level, have an opportunity to work together to kind of promote as a united voice. And then also, as I mentioned, stable funding. So predictable funding that can be used year over year for sustained tourism promotion activities. And why now? So two to three years of the athletics being here, that was not a driving force behind why we started the feasibility for this. It is an added bonus, of course. We do have new hotel development. I can think of three off the top of my head that are hopefully coming online in the next five to eight years. Those, any new hotels that come online within the first five-year period would automatically be grandfathered in. And then, of course, at the point in which we were to renew the district, we would then survey the new additional hotels. But there is just, there's a potential for growth here. And it's really a good opportunity for us to maximize marketing leverage during, when we're getting a lot, we're getting a lot of exposure. And so it's a good opportunity to take advantage of that. So the governance and operations. So the city, like I mentioned, will be collecting the quarterly assessment as part of our tax consultant that collects the TOT taxes. We would recommend that we create an Owners Association, which is a nonprofit corporation that manages that budget, the priorities, the programs, and initiatives. There are other jurisdictions that have quasi-governmental agencies, a visit, fill-in-the-blank. Those are nonprofits as well. So there does need to be some sort of an entity that is outside of us to kind of keep things clean. And a nonprofit is generally the best practice for that. And then tourism promotion, so strategic marketing, sales generation, destination development, safety and security are just a few things that the hoteliers have outlined in their management district plan. I already mentioned the assessment flexibility. And then annual accountability. So the nonprofit will have reporting requirements to the city council. So they would have reporting to both the Economic Development and Housing Commission and the city council on an annual basis that they can estimate the cost for the improvements and activities, report on what's been done, and then also report and estimate any carryover or deficit from the previous year. So the formation timeline, I'm here today with the resolution of intention. We will be doing an official noticing, most likely tomorrow, to all of the hotels that will be, are proposed to be assessed, noticing that we are pursuing formation. November 5th, we would hold a public meeting for testimony and formation and assessments. There will not be a council action during that public meeting. Then on December 3rd, we will have a final public hearing where there will be an opportunity for testimony, and then there'll be a council action to adopt a resolution to actually form the district. I have in here October through December for nonprofit corporation formation. So the city is looking into options to actually form the nonprofit, and that takes a couple of months' time to do that. And then it's proposed that January 1st, the district would launch and assessments would begin with the first actual remittance of those assessments after the end of the first quarter in April. So the recommended action is to adopt Resolution 25-107, which declares the intention for the Tourism Marketing District. We would schedule the November 5th public meeting and then set the December 3rd public hearing. And just as a closing, this initiative positions West Sacramento to capitalize on unprecedented tourism opportunities while generating sustainable economic benefits for our community. So I'm happy to take any questions. We do have our consultant Civitas, I pointed the wrong way, from Civitas here, if there's any really in-the-weeds questions that I'm not able to answer. And also a big thank you to them. They've been with us for a year and a half from feasibility all the way through now, and they've been a great partner and a great resource for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Great presentation. Very helpful. And I'd like to open it up now for my colleagues, and then we also will have public comment, I gather. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak under public comment? Just wanted to see how many.
We have no request to speak on this item.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Ocala?
I just have two questions. You mentioned the 2% being cast on. So if you have an occupancy at a hotel, and the rate is what, 9.25 now in the city? Is that to mean another 2%?
Correct. So the rate for TOT, which is the line item that you see on your bill, is actually 12%. And that is something that's set by the city or county. I don't know at which point it was set for our city and county, but every city and county sets their own TOT. And that would be an additional item, an additional line item noted for West Sacramento Tourism Marketing District. It would be a 2%.
And then you said there were seven hotels, but there were 50% that you pulled?
So by law, it is required that at least 50% of the, so each, based, so the total TOT taxes that are collected, the percentage that each hotel remits is what their waiting, their voting weight is. So at least 50% of the assessed hotels, based on value of TOT, needed to submit petitions, a yes petition. So I have yes petitions from Spring Hill Suites, Hampton Inn, Home to Suites. I had a verbal confirmation from Holiday Inn Express, but I did not get their petition in time for tonight's meeting. And that was 66% with the three hotels. And then if I had received the one that I had a verbal from, that would be 77%.
One more?
Yeah.
The Owners Association, what would that be comprised? You said it's a nonprofit. Can you give me an example of how we're going to do that?
Yeah. So the, there's a couple of ways that I imagine that might be, does the city have a voice on that as well? So the Owners Association is kind of just the, the term for the nonprofit association, whatever that name might be. It would be comprised of the hotel owners. And then the board of the nonprofit is comprised of the hotel owners. If there are other individuals in the entertainment field that that board, you know, feels in their bylaws, they would like to include, they can include that in there. We will ensure that the city, per those bylaws, has a seat on the board, as well as the agreement that the city will have with that nonprofit, will also state that the city will always have a seat on that board.
Just one more question. So who would make, who would make the decision on what nonprofit? Is it the city that's going to be doing that, or is it the?
The city does have an option. Right now, there is no, there is no nonprofit. The city does have an option to work with a consultant, which we're exploring right now, to actually create that nonprofit and set it up so that it's ready for the Owners Association to make those types of decisions. And we would write the bylaws for that, which would note who would be included in the board.
Any other questions?
No questions.
I do have a question. On the amount that is anticipated to be the generated revenue, on the, on the tax itself, the TOT, what year was that taken?
The, the, oh, the projections, it was based on the most recent reported quarter.
What, what date is that?
Twenty, was the last 24, yeah.
2024? Oh, okay, 24, 25.
Yeah.
Is there, I'm curious to know, since the As arrived, has there been, I've been asking this question to the city manager for over a month now. I haven't received a response, so I'll ask it.
I can give you a response. The numbers aren't complete yet, and that's why we haven't been able to compile the full data. But I can tell you, just looking at quarter over quarter, at least at first glance, there hasn't been a remarkable increase in TOT based on, you know, quarter this year versus quarter last year. We won't have the full last quarter of the baseball season until the end of this month. But it's based on when the TOT reports are due. So that's why you haven't received it yet. So we will provide that information to the council once we have the full information. But I can tell you, just looking at the quarters, at least the first quarter of the baseball season versus last year, it wasn't a remarkable.
It wasn't. That's been, I know we have somebody from, you know, representing the hospital industry, and I'm curious to know if anybody has any expertise in this area. If based on the arrival of the As, we were hoping to see a tick, uptick on, but has there been any, based on experience, even if, even if we don't have the numbers? It's okay. You can come up to the mic.
As far as the revenue compared to last year, it's not a whole lot. It is really sometimes based on who's playing or if they're a popular one, right? But I'm getting, we're getting a lot of reservations and mostly even on the weekdays, which is great for us. And I think, talking about the S T M D, this basically will help us to enhance our marketing out there. Because when you say Rivercat, they always say Sacramento. It's never say West Sacramento, right? So that's been a challenge. And so as a general manager, I, we end up paying a lot of marketing, for example, Expedia, to just give us the campaign to promote, just to promote the West Sacramento side of it. And if you look at the, the impression on Expedia, we put on the first page, we put that we are only three miles away from Rivercat. And that gives us a lot of that boost, you know, for overnight accommodations. So, and I think this S T M D will help us a lot. Because not only that, it will boost one hotel, it will be representing a lot of hotels in West Sacramento.
So your sense is people don't know your presence and your proximity?
Correct.
That's interesting. So your, so the utilization of the funding, is it going to be through like the Expedia or is it going to be different?
That's different, yeah. It is just, well, she can explain better on that side, but I've also worked outside West Sacramento, I've been part of the S T M D Sacramento, and we, some of the funds can be used, for example, the Aftershock. That's, it's a citywide sale in Sacramento, everywhere, all the way to Vallejo. In the past, when they were here, the first year they were here, we utilized or we used funding from S T M D to rent a bus to go through all the hotels. And that helped us a lot.
Okay.
And because I used to work in McClellan Park, again, there's no name in there, but there's a hotel there. But it's kind of helped us, S T M D helped us, you know, to kind of like, oh, okay, there is a hotel in there. Okay, so let's go there. So there's several, several ways of where they can put the funds.
Okay, that's interesting. So it's just beyond marketing.
Correct.
Utilizing resources to bring people to their destination. Like you mentioned, the bus.
Yes.
That's great to hear. I'm glad to hear that. And, and happy to work more with you on what the city can do, aside from this itself, to be able to market your business. Because I feel like the As came upon us really quick. Our focus was getting the field ready to go. I think our next prep is going to be to do more of, I know we got the Play the West Sacway. We launched, we threw that out the door so fast, but, but I think we're all reevaluating the success and, and, you know, our progress. And I'm going to, you know, bring together a bunch of chambers, and I'd like for you to be a part of that so that, you know, we can partner with you as this is rolling forward. So that the chambers can be supportive of your effort. Now that you have this financing, you have more leverage.
Right.
So, and that's how you see it? And how do you see yourself working with the chambers?
Well, we have been. I think this is the second time I'm ever too. I want to give you an example too, that you do know that we do have the Visitor's Bureau, Convention Visitor's Bureau. Most of the time, they go out Sacramento to promote Sacramento. Again, it's very, it's not specific to us, towards West Sacramento. We can be part of that trade show wherever they go.
Oh, that's great.
San Diego, they go to San Diego, they go to Las Vegas, and we can use the funds to market, you know, to, to, to show West Sacramento where are we? We're not far from there. And as a matter of fact, every time we have a guests, we always say, or a phone call, we're not far from downtown Sacramento. You don't even have to hit the freeway to go to downtown Sacramento. You know, so it is a great, it's a good opportunity for us, most especially in marketing.
That's, that's good to hear. You know, when I get off the airport, I see little brochures of all the cities except West Sacramento.
Exactly. I didn't even know West Sacramento until I got this job. You know, the landmark is always IKEA, right? It's by IKEA. So, you know, not a lot of people know us yet. But there's a lot of hotels coming up. I mean, as you know, Mr. Amric is opening another Residence Inn or another hotel. So it's going to be 300 rooms right there in that corner.
Yes, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. Amric is great too. I'm grateful for his presence. So thank you. That is, love to sit down and chat with you more in planning for the future as well as our colleagues here.
And if it helps, I can present to you the, the president of the other S T M D in Sacramento. He's a great friend of mine, and he can explain to you, you know, how it is and what they're doing that we can probably adopt to make it successful.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your clarification of all of this.
And just to expand very briefly on that, so just like any nonprofit, there would be some sort of a strategic planning of retreat where they would plan out exactly how those marketing dollars are going to be used and her voice and any voice where.
Her experience.
Yeah, from the hotels would, would drive that. So, marketing doesn't necessarily mean, you know, just pamphlets or other, or advertising. They can do whatever they want. And so that's kind of the, the beauty of this, is they can get together and really set that, that program of work for the year.
Yeah, we have like Wine Club Crawl or, you know, we can do things that our businesses, other businesses, you know, so if they're, you know, staying at your hotel, we got all these other ideas on what you could do out here in, in West Sacramento. Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. So no questions, just all comments. I am over the moon that we are here tonight. When I brought this forward to strategic planning after I was newly elected, there were a handful of questions during strategic planning, but council agreed that this is something that we should move forward. And I'm so incredibly proud of the work that staff has done to get us here. And thank you to the hotels who've signed up for this. As a former consultant who formed these districts and worked for Visit Sacramento, I have firsthand seen the power of Tourism Improvement Districts in economic development and building community. We have an incredible opportunity to brand West Sacramento and showcase the work that we do here outside of our community to put more heads and beds. And having an Owners Association with stable funding and having the owners and the general managers sit on the board, the experts in their industry directing how the money is spent, is going to pay dividends to our community. And, you know, I think Play the West Way was a great start as an economic development strategy, but now we have an opportunity to brand our community. And whether it's a Meet West Sacramento or a Visit West Sacramento, or it becomes something totally different, this is the district that gets to do this. You know, one of the things I know that people love in different communities, I just got back from Boston, and they've got a very large destination marketing organization. BOS is their new brand, and it's on hats, it's on shirts. And I know West Sacramento loves wrapping West Sacramento when people go visit places. They love buying swag. Nobody thinks of that type of stuff when it comes to destination marketing, but making people, when they bring outside money in, and then the locals embracing the brand, completely changes the face of a city. And so you brought up Aftershock. I think it's one of the great examples of when tourist, destination marketing organizations think outside of the box. That was partnerships between the destination marketing organization and the county to bring, first of all, it started as a one-day rock music festival. Um, that was partnerships between the destination marketing organization and the county to bring, uh, first of all, it started as a one-day rock music festival. Now it's a four-day rock music festival, that's the biggest on the west coast, and in 2024, 22 million in spending came to the region because of Aftershock. And we saw that in West Sacramento, um, not just in the restaurants or hotels. And so we have the opportunity to part with organizations like Visit Sacramento. Um, and then you mentioned fam tours and going to different org, uh, different events to bring conferences and meetings to our hotels. There's just so much that can be done, um, specialized marketing campaigns on different holidays. And, and there's experts in destination marketing that will just blow your mind of the things that they can come up, like having the A's in town is such a tiny piece of the puzzle of what this DMO is going to do. Um, and I'm just excited to sit down with the newly formed board and just challenge them to think outside of the box and push really hard for what this organization can do. Um, I'm just, I'm just beyond excited. I'm very proud. Taking it off January 2026 is going to be perfect. So thank you for your support, and I'm just really happy to be here today.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Um, I, I just wanted to say thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Sepio Hall, for bringing this, um, to our city. I would have never thought of anything like this before, and I can feel your excitement. And I think we are just so fortunate to have that level of knowledge that we are able then to bring, and thank you to the staff, who took the idea and ran with it and were able to work boots on the ground to make this happen. Thank you as well. Um, I'm also really excited and, uh, cannot wait to see some sort of West Sac branding. You're right, we love branding things. I can't wait to wear the T-shirt, the hat. I will also wear a full jumpsuit. So, thank you so much.
Full jumpsuit?
A tracksuit? Those things are in, friend.
Only if it's ripaway pants.
Why, why is she planks?
Right.
Okay, so, um, thank you for the presentation, Megan. It's been a minute since I've seen you come up and actually do a full-fledged, I, and well done. Um, you know, all of the, the, we've been, this is a long time coming, and I appreciate that you actually brought up the strategic plan, because I had it in my purse right then, and does have a reflection of this, um, this goal for us. And I do want to echo, uh, my colleagues when I say, yes, Councilmember Sepio Hall, before she joined this council, was already talking about P bids and tourist, uh, marketing district, but tourist improvement district is what we called it back then. Um, it's great to see that we're actually making movement on this and bringing it to life and, and, and feeding the, the spirit of that effort. Uh, it's also cool to hear that there are folks that are really behind it, want, see the potential and investment like this. I like where we fit along the continuum of the different contributions in the region. Um, and I agree, I mean, there's, there's, there is so much more we can do. Uh, there, you know, I had been thinking about initially, this is outside of tourism improvement, but it kind of could be complimentary about doing a, a, a marketing video about West Sacramento, talking about the beautiful neighborhoods in this community. We have, uh, anywhere from the north side, this historic Brighton-Broderick that has the, the legacy of West Sacramento and where we started, and all the richness of the homeowners there and the folks that love their community so greatly. You have some of the newest areas in the development where you could showcase the, you know, the Bridge District and, um, all of the, the investments, whether that be Birdies or Drake the Barn or Frankut and local businesses in the area like Free House and Midway, um, and, and others that I'm not mentioning, but nonetheless, say, there's, there's so many cool things happening in West Sacramento that I don't think people even know about. So they come in, they squatted a game, and then they leave because they go to what they know. This is the very first time people are coming to the city. Unless somebody, you know, has a, a big arrow dancing around on a corner, how are they going to know where to find these things? And so I think the sky's the limit with that, um, neighborhood video. For me, it was just attracting residents. But at the same time, if, if you grew to love this city and saw it through the eyes of the people who lived here, who were testimonials, of, you know, this is why I love and stay here, that's why people would want to love and stay here. I don't know that we did, and again, I'm going to focus a little bit on the A's, even though it isn't about the A's. Okay, I'm just going to say it and get it out. But, um, you know, the, I think a lot of folks, I have to acknowledge this, thought that this was going to bring a lot more activity. Okay? And so to just acknowledge the, you know, elephant in the room, I mean, it, it doesn't appear that it did, at least anecdotally, you know, at, at this juncture. Um, but what have we done to, to welcome the Bay Area fans, many of whom were disgruntled about being here in the first place? Like, to the extent that we could have said, hey, man, get you, come over here and enjoy. We are not battling how great you are, we just want you here. And, and one of the ideas would be, you know, hey, uh, come for the A's, stay for the A's, and they could stay in our, in our hotels and, and enjoy a night, you know? Uh, um, show your ticket and get, you know, 10% off. I don't know, I'm making stuff up on the dice, so don't listen to me completely. But just all of the ideas that as we were trying to plan on the fly to get them here and to welcome and to be ready, you know, these are, these are ideas that we can now brainstorm as we move forward together. Um, but with that, I just, I'm excited about the potential of new energy coming from this district, uh, for the people who run these businesses to have their own say and agency over what it is that's being marketed out there. West Sacramento has grown so tremendously and changed and complexioned in the last 30 years since we, you know, plus 30 years. Um, from one where, when I first moved here, someone said, watch out for the gangs, and I thought, what gang? I mean, like, it, from that to this new burgeoning community that's on the cusp of innovation. I want to see more of that. I think this is moving in that direction.
All right. Megan, back to you. I'm sorry, let me, um, catch up here. To the team, Megan, applaud, you know, your, your hard work. Councilmember, uh, Mayor Potem Sepio Hall, for your leadership in bringing this to council. When I first heard about it, didn't have any background on it, heard a lot about the Visit Sacramento, Yolo, you know, those organizations, but that was going to take money, and, and, uh, we weren't in a position to contribute. But this idea does bring together their own revenue source. My only concern was the commitment. Is there commitment? And it, and it appears there is. Uh, I, I would say that, um, the, the, you know, hotel industry, um, the hospitality industry realizes that they are losing money if they don't find, take advantage of an opportunity based on their experience. And we know, we tried really hard. I'm not going to take away all the hard work. You tried really hard. Um, starting off, everybody was new in the team, and we didn't anticipate the A's arrival here, um, you know? And, and we had a lot of moving pieces, and you tried really hard to, you know, hit the ground running on getting us, you know, with the West Sac way publicized. I, I'm not going to do a quarterbacking and say, hey, we, we didn't succeed. I think we did. I think we did. I see successes. I feel it. Um, the momentum is still there, and, and it doesn't happen overnight. I don't think that, you know, the, the, this tourism, um, marketing is going to happen overnight either. It's going to be a year of growth. As you all know, you're not going to see something, even though you're getting your annual report, you're not going to see something that says, hey, look at all, all these, um, heads are in beds now. We, we, it's going to take some time. And, and that's why I would like to bring in as many partners into West Sacramento. I love our West Sac Chamber. Um, but they are, you know, as, as we have been in, as a growing city, very limited in staff. And I don't want to, you know, put, put it on anybody's, in any one entity's shoulders. I think we need more, um, you know, resources. And I think there's interest, um, to be able to help, help West Sacramento build, um, as we continue to grow. And, and we want, um, to bring in a new team. I'm not going to, I'm going to say it right here. We, we do want to bring in after the A's, um, you know, transfer out, you know, um, as they had been planning on to bring in a new team. So that's, that's why we have to hit the ground running. You know, I know, um, the mayor Potem is going to be vigilantly watching over the success, um, as that is her experience in Visit Sacramento, which I'm, I applaud her for that effort, um, and, and in doing so, you know, working together harmoniously as a council, um, to move this, um, great success forward. And, um, thank you for the staff for all your dedication and your time and, um, bringing this to us today for a vote. Um, we're really grateful for this. Thank you. And I believe, um, we'll open it up for public comment, which there is none, Madam Clerk.
All right. We have no, we have no request to speak on this item.
All right, closing public comment, um, and bringing it back to council for.
Early moves.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, Councilmember Early move, Mayor Potem Sepio Hall second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sepio Hall.
Very enthusiastic, aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So excited. Thank you. All right. Next is our general administration function, part two. Do we have any council assignment reports? Yes. Councilmember Early.
Okay, it has been a busy week. Um, I had Yolo TV, uh, this past Monday, in which we discussed that, um, we will need to have a new contract with a, uh, new, um, transportation, uh, organization. Right now, we have a contract with Transdev. That's who, um, helps to run all of our Yolo buses, um, throughout West Sac and throughout the county. Uh, we are racing, um, to get a RFP out so that we can solicit proposals for potentially, um, a new transportation, um, organization that would help us. Also could be Transdev if they so chose. Um, what was highlighted on Monday is that the contract that we are working from is from 2018, so it is, um, extremely outdated. And also the costs that were fixed in that contract are expected to go up significantly. What that means is the short-range transit plan that we are going to be presented by YTD in November will be really important, um, because the likelihood of us being able to maintain the same service levels, um, will be challenging because, as we know, transportation organizations and districts across the country, across California, are staring at fiscal cliffs. Um, and so if we know that, uh, the organization that is going to be running our buses is now the contract going to go up significantly, um, that likely means that we will need to think about how all of our, um, services, not only here in West Sacramento, but across the county, uh, how we will be able to either maintain them or likely, um, how they will, uh, have to be cut in some way. Um, and so the short-range transit plan that you, all that we will be presented, um, in November by YTD is going to be, uh, important because there are three buckets that you will see in that, uh, short-range transit plan. You will see, um, if we maintain the same status, um, you'll also see if we were to grow, which again, the likelihood seems slim to none, uh, because there are not more dollars coming in, uh, to our Yolo Transportation District, or if we were actually to reduce services. Um, I know Councilmember Alkla has, uh, met with me, uh, with YTD, because what was, um, being proposed initially was to cut the services out of Brighton-Broderick, um, which again, would be a challenge, because then the only, uh, public transportation that they would have would be VIA. Uh, this gets back to the conversations we've had around the sustainability of VIA. And if, for whatever reason, um, costs would become prohibitive, what that would mean for public transportation across our city, particularly in, um, Brighton-Broderick, uh, again, because we know that there, um, are a lot of families that are dealing with poverty there, right? And rely on public transportation. And so what I would ask is, you make sure you pay attention, um, November, uh, because that short-range transit plan is going to be very important, um, as the potential blueprint for what, um, services could be in service reduction, uh, in West Sacramento. And so that's one thing I would flag for us. Um, today I had the Capital Area Regional Tolling Authority as well, CARDA, um, as hopefully all of you know, Yolo 80 Project, um, tolling lanes will, uh, be coming to, uh, Yolo County, um, I think in 2028, I think is what we're aiming for it to be online. Uh, we are, once again, racing very fast on that one as well. We are holding ourselves to very tight timelines. And today we were talking about, um, the, what we call waterfall of revenue, our revenue waterfall, and how those dollars could be, um, allocated, um, from, um, the revenue that will come from tolls. This was an interesting conversation because, uh, we, it was, I would say, um, um, very, uh, very exciting conversation. It's the word I will use. Uh, anytime you start talking about revenue, uh, across districts and across jurisdictions, um, it can, um, again, get very exciting. Um, one of the things that was, I think, top of mind for folks was a VMT mitigation and what that would look like and whether that should come before, um, setting aside, um, maintenance, um, dollars to maintain in 10 and 20 years, our, um, our tolling system, because we will be responsible for that by, I mean, CARDA. Um, and I think we had, uh, a very good discussion around the fact that VMT mitigation, my stance, um, and some of our fellow Yolo County folks' stance was VMT mitigation is very important. Um, and we should make sure that we have dollars set aside for that, just as we do in maintaining the, um, maintaining our tolling system. That was what was promised when we, um, originally came forward with, uh, potentially adding a tolling lane to, uh, both the Causeway from Davis through West Sacramento. Um, and right now, the conversation is, will we have enough money to do something along those lines? Um, but again, the whole, the whole push for this was that we would have VMT mitigation. Without that, what you then have is the potential for, um, increased, um, cars on the road without really having, um, increased public transportation to go with that and give people options to get out of their cars, uh, which is really important as we, again, are facing a climate crisis. Um, so again, a very exciting week, um, and please pay attention on November.
Councilmember, had they provided an update on, um, the A's utilization of Yolo Bus?
No, um, I can definitely ask about that, um, in our executive report. I, I, I will ask. I'll, I'll leave it there.
Oh, great. And also, um, I, I, um, believe that, um, Yolo, the Yolo Bus does have data that might be useful for, um, you know, our, our transportation folks, um, to compare it with VIA, just to be able to have that.
Interesting you should say that. Um, so we also had a conversation, um, about our new system that we put in. We, meaning YTD, I'm wearing that hat, um, and to our buses, uh, last year. Unfortunately, the system that was put in to collect data has been challenged, um, in coming online. Uh, so I definitely think there is data. I will say that when you look at the short-range transit plan, that much of the data that is in there is actually VIA data. Um, and so we can definitely ask. I have asked. I will continue to ask.
And I, and I believe VIA is, um, is, is a partner in data sharing. It, it, it is not reciprocated.
We continue to ask, um, uh, for data, uh, about services in, uh, West Sacramento.
So when we think about preserving Yolo Bus services, data is essential in order for us to make some key financial decisions in the future.
You are talking to a data scientist. I concur.
Fifty-nine percent of VIA users in West Sacramento come from Brighton-Broderick. And most of them, um, you know, are people that have just one car or a female or the elderly. And I just want to highlight that we do have the data from VIA.
We do.
Who, um, continue to share it with us. Um, you know, this is an important element. I think being able to, um, work in partnership, you know, with, um, with an, with an entity that is, um, you know, I think just, if there's any way to find a way that they can provide some resources and tools for data gathering.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't know if they're communicating. It doesn't seem like.
So I, by they, are you saying VIA to YTD?
Yes, we, I'm hearing about the new data platform, but I don't know if they're, like, is it going to be a way to share data? Or is it just going to be another system that is clogging the system and we don't know what's going on?
Yeah, so, so a couple of things. Um, I think in regards to the data that is shared from VIA to YTD, that's actually shared from us, our staff. Um, I know our staff, uh, do work, um, with, uh, YTD and also across jurisdictions. There is a group of transportation staff that meet regularly, um, to discuss transportation issues, including data. And so that's how I know our, our staff has asked for Yolo Bus data. I've been in meetings with, uh, our city manager, as well as our assistant city manager, also asking for data. So that is something that we definitely do request. Um, I think there is data that exists to the level that VIA is able to provide. I, I don't necessarily know that one, um, if that data exists on the YTD side. Um, I think the conversation that we had when we talked about VIA passes and the fact that VIA passes are actually, um, uh, cheaper than passes for Yolo Bus, again, to your point, if you are, um, living in a situation where your income is precarious, right? You are going to go with the cheaper option. And so I also think right now. I also think right now there is a world in which the VIA services that we are providing, which are again significantly cheaper than the Yolo Bus, makes it challenging, right? When you're having to pick which one you're going to do, of course, you're going to pick the cheaper, more convenient, um, location to co-location option versus the bus, which is a conversation again, we, we had when we talked about our passes and whether to lower the cost or not. And so I think there's a world in which we are going to need to think seriously, and this is what I advocated for when we talked about this before, about what transportation as a whole looks like. And how do we ensure that rather than VIA potentially undercutting, um, Yolo Bus and transportation, right? That they're actually working together so that we can, um, again, be strategic about these resources. Because at the end of the day, dollars that are going to YTD are West Sac dollars that should be used in West Sac. And so how can we be more intentional about what that looks like?
So VIA is the beholder of the data. Our, our city, um, is not.
Aaron's leaning in.
Uh, yeah, I just, but we heard there is going to be a, a presentation coming up. I don't know if it'll be the November 5th or 19th meeting, uh, from YTD on the short range transit plan. I would, I would encourage, um, lots of these questions to be asked of them, especially about data that YTD, uh, either is or isn't collecting.
When is the presentation?
We haven't scheduled it exactly yet, but it's going to be one of the meetings in November. So I just want to make sure we're on track here. These are council reports and we're kind of getting a little.
I see.
Uh, off base here a little bit. So thanks.
Okay. Sounds good. And, um, yes, I do agree that there is a report. And then when VIA comes up, that is off topic as well. Um, so once VIA came up for my colleague, I brought, I brought it up as well.
I will say nothing else, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, it's, I, I just want to make sure we're, we're sticking to the council reports, uh, for tonight. And we do have an item coming up in November. We can cover a lot of the stuff that was just talked about. So thanks.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, any other reports?
I have a report. Um, so, uh, I had the pleasure of serving as the honorary chair of the Metro Chamber's Study Mission to Boston last week. And, uh, it's funny as we're just talking about public transportation, um, and Boston has an incredible underground light rail system. And with the Charlie Card, you can pretty much get wherever you want to go in the city. Um, and it just reinforces the importance of public transportation and how we need to invest in the infrastructure to get people around, um, in these large modes of transportation that aren't cars. Because I will tell you, um, the thing you did not want to do is get in a car in Boston. Um, it was walking or light rail. That was the way to get around. Um, uh, you know, a full week of programming, um, you know, compliments to the Metro Chamber for all of the work they do to get us there. Um, you know, capital cities, both a lot of history, but at the end, um, the group, uh, sits and reflects on kind of what they've learned from the last week. And one of the biggest things that we took, um, home, and this is, you know, 80 folks, um, from the capital region, was the alignment between many of the jurisdictions, um, on shared goals and, um, the commitment for everyone to focus on one goal, uh, to move the region forward. And so we're talking regionally about what that could look like. Um, and there was also a lot of leadership from elected officials as well. And so, um, um, it was a great opportunity to learn about a city. I've brought, you know, every time I'm sitting in those sessions, I'm always sparked with ideas of things that, you know, I want to do and conversations I want to have. Um, and so I appreciate the opportunity to go. Um, and I look forward to continue conversations likely facilitated by the Metro Chamber, um, to lead region-wide initiatives with all of the, um, communities and orgs lined up, uh, together, moving in the same direction.
Thank you. Mayor Potem. Any other reports? All right. Um, today the Yolo, um, Animal JPA met and, uh, and briefly and, um, discussed what the future of, um, of the potential, you know, operations could look like. We have, um, a request for information out. So, uh, so far only two takers. They're hoping, um, by the end of October, that if, um, there are not more than two, they'll continue to maybe keep that open as a potential operation, um, for the future. Or if not, you know, the county may continue, um, to assume the operations. There was, um, a lot of feedback from the public, um, about the process and, uh, you know, it's, it's going to continue to move forward and evolve. It's, um, it's just a process that is not fixed. It is a real flexible process. On top of that, there is a, um, going to be a new snippet program that's going to get started and hopefully be mobile from city to city, which will, uh, allow for, uh, cats, people, you know, I learned a lot about cats today, how many litters they can have in, um, one year. Um, a female can have up to 40 kittens in a year. And, uh, so, you know, it's the, the snippet is to, um, you know, prevent that from happening. So, um, we can help socialize, um, these programs. This is a grant that, that the, uh, Yolo County, um, Animal Services will receive and we want to get as many cats into the program. Um, so as, as my colleague, um, Mayor Potem shared her, um, trip to Boston, I was out in, uh, Japan in the, um, Japanese United States, um, Sister City Association, um, which included a trip to Osaka. And, um, we received a presentation, um, from representatives, uh, both the governor and the, um, mayors that were present. Uh, we also had a tour of a hydrogen plant. It is a very unique, uh, plant that is, um, creating a very, um, non, it's a non-flammable type of, um, uh, hydrogen. And, uh, they are able to, um, transport it in, in trucks. And so they're very interested about our hydrogen train. And I know they're going to be going up and down the state, um, meeting with the representatives from California that were present. Um, so there's that. And then we also, um, uh, presented, um, there and at the UN, um, United States, um, University, where UC Davis is a key, um, partner with the Japan United States Leadership. Um, UC Davis has been working in collaboration, um, as far as university, um, development. And, uh, the prefector, um, Shiliza Marwala, rector of the United Nations University, has, um, also participated in drafting a forward on the role of universities in advancing the 2030 agenda for sustainable development. And UC Davis is a co-chair of the 17 Sustainable Development Goals, um, that have been organized. And so I'd like to continue to see the development of that partnership with UC Davis here in West Sacramento and, um, a partnership with Japan as we move forward, um, with the United Nations University. So we'll continue that, um, relationship as we move forward. Um, they were also very, um, interested. The governor of Tokyo, uh, in her presentation, talked about the, um, evolution of spaces that did not have parks and outdoor recreational areas. So the presentation that I provided about our flood, um, protection and our levee system was intriguing to everybody there. Thank you, Doug and Paul for helping me in preparing that presentation. Um, it was a great presentation and everybody was fascinated by the work that has been done with our flood protection. The other presentation, um, was VIA and, um, there is a lot of interest and research being done on our on-demand rideshare program, uh, allowing people to go from door to door, um, and also having the AI technology to be able to track where the demand is in the city and redirect resources to where the demand is. And, um, there is, uh, research being done, not only by Harvard University, but by, um, Columbia University, University students funded by the foundation that contributed to the trip that, um, that I and many other colleagues from the United, uh, California took. So there will continue to be, um, research being gathered in collaboration with West Sacramento, VIA, and, um, these organizations that are tracking what our accomplishments have been since we have been, um, you know, we established VIA. And yes, the rate is low for VIA. That was intentional to get people to get onto VIA. Um, and yes, to revisit, I know that VIA has been working collaboratively, um, because it is not only a challenge, um, as, um, they described here, but in other jurisdictions where they need to be able to keep it sustainable. So they're well aware of that concern. So with that, um, I, I think it was very interesting to also meet with architect Paul Tangay, um, and, uh, also learn a little bit more about, um, you know, what he's done to help shape Tokyo. Not only did Paul Tangay contribute to that, but his father helped, you know, create, um, the way the architecture work in, in Tokyo, just, uh, just going way back. And, um, so I invited Paul to come out and take a look at what's happening in West Sacramento to see what, what they can accomplish out here in, um, future development. And they're all very interested in seeing what, what they can do in working together in partnership with, um, with West Sacramento and other jurisdictions. So when they come, would love to have you all present in meeting with them because that's how everybody rolls out there. Um, just to, uh, share the number of business cards that we exchanged. It's a lot of people that we meet. A lot of people that are present, um, and we meet and, um, humbling, um, and, and an honor, and an honor to be able to be present there. So with that, um, we'll move on to part two, council calendar.
Good evening. Um, just one item of note this Saturday is the, uh, Fire Open House at Station 45. And that's it?
And, um, this Saturday I invite you all to participate, um, in one of our grantees from the Bloomberg Youth Climate Action Fund in, uh, the, uh, city, um, uh, center, the community center. From 10 AM to 3 PM, we're going to have, um, our first Youth Climate Action Summit. And it's driven by our youth. I'm really excited about that. And so, um, it's, it's from 10 AM to 3 PM. And I believe about 50 youth have already registered to participate.
Are there any other activities that council members? Alcala, do you know of any, uh, before, at the Dia de los Muertos?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Dia de los Muertos, I believe it's going. Let me check the calendar here. It's going to be celebrated, I believe, on the first over in, over at the VFW on Driever. Is it Driever? Is that it? On the first at the VFW? I'm sorry. Isn't it going to be on the riverfront? No, no, no. They weren't able to do that. Oh, okay. So I understand it's going to be over on Driever. They're going to close the street. Oh, okay. And they're going to have a car show and, you know, different nonprofits going to be there. Well, that's good. A lot of freebies for everyone. It'd be really nice.
And, um, I believe we're having a Veterans Day Parade. So, um, if you would like to participate, um, Brian, speaker is, um, helping to gather any interest in participation. And also would love to have our veterans from our city also participate in the parade. Um, if they'd like to get a vehicle, we can share that information among all the veterans in all the departments. We can extend that invitation to them. Um, council calendar and other things that are happening in the city. City manager report?
Uh, no report. Just to embarrass her, um, today Amanda is celebrating her 10-year anniversary, working for the city.
Yay, 10 years. Wow. All right. Hang in there, Amanda. City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from city council members? Do we have anything? Right. Future agenda item request by council?
Nope.
And we will adjourn.